At all this meeting order, we have a very special group tonight. The Riverdale Warrior State Basketball Champions. And they're gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like for you to pause with us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda. We talked about this last night at length, so I don't know if there are any questions?
You want to do the agenda first?
Oh, excuse me. The agenda first, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Passes. Now the consent agenda. I'm on track now.
Need to approve.
In second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, number six, Mr. Gill.
Yeah, the privilege of recognizing our guest tonight. And they are the Riverdale High School Lady Warriors. And they are also the Girl State Basketball Champions. I know how proud that makes you feel. I know how proud that'll make you feel for many, many, many years to come. I know with about forty seconds to go in the quarterfinals, you had doubts whether you'd be here, but you guys showed tremendous courage. And despite the fact there was an opportunity not to beat Mountain Jude at that late stage of the game, you guys came through in remarkable fashion and won the game. And the way it turned out, that was pretty much, that was the undoing of the rest of them. Because I think that they, Riverdale, just sent terror through them and they all folded at your feet. So that said, we're extremely proud of the job you guys did. That said, what I'd like to do is for Coach Hillary Hodge to step up here and introduce each of you and let you come over here and kind of face the camera there so you guys can get a little airtime. And Dr. Burns told us last night, this is on YouTube, so you'll be seen all over the world. Not only in Rutherford County. So if you would, step to the mic, Hillary, so the names can be heard. And as she calls you now, you step here and face that way. And then I'd like to come around and present you a plaque and just say...
First of all, our seniors, we've got Natalie Lanning, Candace Spurlock, Jacissa Hayslip.
Natalie, come up here, okay? Please.
Just right up front, sweetie. Aubrey Jernigan.
See, I used to coach, I can line girls up, so get up here.
Rachel Orman, Nicole Potowski. Juniors, we have Lauren Cantrell, Hannah Scott, Haley Boland, Catty Bryan, and Ashley Henry. Sophomores, we have Haley Fields and Shakobia Barbie. And our two freshmen on varsity are Tysha Petty and Olivia Jones. Our assistants are Nicole Broadway and John Wild.
I suspect they're good students too, aren't they?
Average about a three point oh. Most of them are honor rolls, so it's an exciting group at length.
Right. Well, this plaque reads, this is presented to the Riverdale Lady Warriors Girl State Champion Basketball Team, Class 885000. Congratulations from Andy Hill School and the director of the Wild Club here. For the boys there, Dr. Mark Burns, Terry Hodges, Doris Jerkison, Noah Jerkison, Grant Kelly. I know how much work we've been doing to do it, and so we have to be able to do it. And you know, it's a modest citizen's career, just going on my private business over here. So congratulations. And is there a briefing in the works?
It's our best.
All right.
Is Dr. Burns the only Riverdale alumni on the board?
I believe so.
If I am. They were runners-up in nineteen seventy-nine when I graduated.
Yeah.
That matters, yeah.
Yep. I remember that game.
McMenville. James Hill's brother. We have no visitors, so we're waiting for...
Okay.
They're coming in now.
Is it your turn?
Yes.
It's your turn.
Well, I'm Dr. Puett from Roy Waldron Principal. And we have brought our drama team here today to do a short performance for you. And also our dance team is also incorporated into the performance. And then at the end, we'd like to sing a special...
Dr. Puett, step up here, we're people from radio and television.
Okay, we have our theme song this year is based on the movie Up, with the little balloons. And we pictured our school going up with our scores and learning. And so our students from the choir have created lyrics to go with the Jefferson theme song. And we're gonna sing that for you at the very end. So we're just getting regrouped and we'll be right on in.
Okay.
This is Ms. O'Kane. She is our drama director. She volunteers her time. The children have spent many hours practicing after school. They began in October and we had our play just recently, a couple of weeks ago. And they were awesome. They performed high school musical junior. We also brought with us Ms. Linker, an educational assistant that's been instrumental in helping us practice. Mr. Monday, if you'll just kind of wave. Mr. Monday is our music teacher, but he's also our choir director. And they come every morning, six forty-five in practice until about seven fifteen for choir performances. And so the choir is mixed in with the drama team tonight. And then our dance team, we brought Ms. Conklin. She's our dance director. And we perform in parades and competitions with our dance team. And they are also in the play. These are our wonderful parents that support us and bring the children to practice. They practice in the afternoons until about four thirty or five o'clock. So we appreciate our parents and all they do to help us. Ms. O'Kane, would you like to say just a few words before we get started?
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for letting us come, I should say. We're very pleased to be here today. We have worked really hard for four months. And we did a full-length musical, high school musical, back in two weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago. They did a fantastic job. So today, we do have for you two songs that we performed. This is part of our whole musical. And we also have a few bits of acting for you. So we should be about ten minutes here. So I hope you enjoy our performance. And if you have any other questions about our drama program or our dance program or our music program, we'll hear you to answer questions too. So I think we're ready.
Is this some kind of sick joke? They need an audition. Someone's got to tell us your rules and rules.
Right. Rule number one, pick the right clip. Two, act like you're click.
Three.
Dress for your click.
Four.
Know where your click clicks.
And rule number five.
Bop to the top.
How crazy is that?
Wow, so this is your private hideout?
Yeah, thanks to the garden club, I've come up here where I'm not gonna be alone.
Must be tricky, even coming to sun.
Yeah, he's gonna freak when he comes about to see my thing.
You're worried?
Yeah, I don't wanna be just a basketball guy. I wanna be, you know, me.
I know what you mean. And I'm gonna let their schools all go and be freaking out. I hate it.
Well, you can't let people stop you from what you wanna do, right?
You're not cooking in honor of my scene. Somebody's been eating something that you're best friends.
Yeah, they didn't care if you could shoot hoops or saw the coins.
Right, so you never wanted to do callbacks?
Hey, just call me Freaky Callback Boy.
Thanks for showing me in the top secret hangovers, just like him though.
Be your best friend.
We're all here and speaking with the boys and the girls. Rock the house.
Rock the house!
The party's on.
Oh!
Everybody makes a noise.
Oh! Yeah! We've arrived. Alright! Because we stuck together. Oh, yeah! To be in one and all. We're all in this together. Once we know that we are, we're all stars. And we see that. We're all in this together. And it shows that we stand and we can make our dreams come. We're all in this together. When we reach, we can fly. No place like, we can make it. We're all in this together. And we see there's a chance that we have and we take it. Wildcats everywhere, wave your hands up in the air. That's the way we do it, let's get to it. Come on! Everyone!
Thank you. That's our selection from our musical that we did. And this was just two out of fourteen songs that our children performed. And they also did an hour and a half length worth of acting as well. And these are grades two through five. And we've also, Mr. Monday, our music teacher, has also come up with a theme song for our school. Moving on up, and so our kids are gonna sing that for you as well. We do have a full choir today. We've only got a selection of our choir with us along with our drama. So choir friends, if anyone up. Lord, for all you do for us down at Roy Waldron School. And we are moving on up down there and having a great time doing it. And thank you very much, yourself, and joy.
We want to thank you too.
All right.
Go ahead.
First of all, let me say, there are good things happening at Roy Waldron. Please be able to visit there last week or two or three weeks ago. You guys are, the principal, Dr. Puett and her staff are getting things turned around. And clearly, to get things turned around, you gotta have buy-in from kids. And kids excited about learning. And clearly, these guys got some pride in their school. And they are indeed moving on up. And we appreciate the hard work you're doing. I know you've got your challenges, but you guys are doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jernigan like to say something?
I just want to compliment this group on all the talent that we've seen. And I think back of my experience on the board for eight years, the vast amount of talent that I've seen in young people in this county. The voice capacity, the acting ability. Everything in addition to athletics. So, young folks, please continue to learn to sing. Enjoy music. It's a great part of your life that you can take with you forever. Learn all kinds of music. I like the young man back here with the red cap. He is involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
We've had several spotlights over the years, but I don't know. If this is not the best, it's one of the best. Way to go, guys. Excellent job. Thank you so much.
Anybody else have anything to say? Thank you, Ms....
I'm proud of you guys. You did me good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Brut.
Okay.
Thank all of you.
All right.
Mr. Wise?
Yes, sir.
The kids were enthusiastic. The parents were enthusiastic, but so was the principal enthusiastic.
That's true.
And that's good to see.
You noticed that. Said, "You noticed that." I didn't tell you. Who's that?
Brian.
Brian wanted to dance.
He wanted to dance. Mr. Odom, maybe we can get some help putting these chairs back. Brilliant and truly, that's what it's all about, folks, with the kids. Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you want to go to this next item or not. Took a lot of discussion last night, but go ahead.
Yeah, we did spend a considerable amount of time talking about moving portables last night, accepting going back out for bid, general contractor's license, et cetera. In pursuit of your request, Dave Mr. Clardy did some work on. I think we've got a, I guess, a world will be solution to the situation. And Ms. Clardy, would you please speak to that?
I have changed the date in the letter to May twenty-eighth. That's the last day of school. For those that did not have their general contractor's license, the contracting board is meeting in Memphis on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And they'll review the applications at that time. So that will give them three days to know if they were accepted and approved contractors. So at that time, we will bring that back of the qualified bidders and get that approved through the board.
Ms. Clark?
The suggestion that Mr. Hodge made about you possibly becoming a general contractor, I guess, for the board, is that something that's plausible or possible?
I checked on that today, and I think it is. So with the board's approval and Mr. Gill's approval, I will proceed. That involves class taking a test and submitting financial balance sheet certified through Mr. Sandvig's office. And I will also try to get that done by May twenty-eighth also.
We had a good safeguard in case something doesn't work out.
I think it is. That will give us latitude to act as a general contractor so we can work subcontractors.
I really appreciate that effort because I would hate to lose these kind of savings, especially in the economic winter that we're having now. This is a wonderful endeavor on our part to make sure we safeguard, you know, that kind of savings on those bids.
It's okay with everybody on the board to pursue that, is it? I get that feeling, okay. One thing I'd like to say, Ms. Clardy, this is a classic reason of why we have a work session. Because last night, we were very confused and a lot of controversy in talking. And we came back with a plan, or you came back with a plan, to settle the whole thing. And I think that's commendable. And I think it's a good reason to say why we have work sessions.
Yes, and Mr. Gill and Mr. Sandvig helped me work through this today, so we got it resolved. Thank you all.
Do you have something you want to say, Jeff?
The tab sheet that's attached, I copied some of the bid documents that Ryan put on the back. Just for more information.
Any other questions on this item? There's not a vote on this, so...
So moved.
Well, there's not one, so we won't have to do that. I just want to make sure everybody had all the questions they want answered. All right, Mr. Gill, number ten.
Financial matters. General purpose school budget amendment. This amendment budgets the $528,000 in state BEP funds that the system will get this year because of the state's January two thousand and ten increase in teacher medical insurance rates. We have this amendment whenever the state has this mid-year increase. And we recommend that you amend $528,000 in state BEP funds, account forty-six five eleven, and $528,000 in additional medical insurance expenditure for regular education teachers, account seventy-one one hundred dash two oh seven.
You've heard the recommendation from motion. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Eleven.
Eleven, approval of non-renewal for non-tenure teachers. Recent case law suggests the board must authorize a director of schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenure teachers. Recommend that the board authorize a director of schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenure teachers for the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? General discussion of board. Mr. Jernigan.
I'd like to see us have a special presentation from the SROs as to how we're dealing with the potential for gang activities in our schools. I read and see things in the papers about this. It's on the news. It would seem that we should be proactive in this area. And if we're, are we where we need to be? And what are we doing to get further ahead in this area?
First of all, let's do that, Ms. Barnes. We'll set up something in the next few weeks. And also have Josh Kubley partake in it. I mean, I think we're doing good things with respect to identifying gag activity. Principals are on board. They've been training how to identify those students that may participate in it. I'm sure we can do better. I think that the SRO would be the first say, but I would say they've always been proactive with respect to gang activity and winning in the things. So let's hear from them.
Any other discussion? I guess everybody got out of the system last night.
Yeah, yeah, I do. Last night, I mentioned, just want to mention it again. No child left behind. Part of the requirement it is that we gravitate towards hitting a hundred percent highly qualified teachers. I'm pleased to say that the system, and you know, if you're a viewer out there, you're probably thinking, "Well, I thought everybody was qualified." It's much easier said than done. We have people on alternate licenses, and we have Teach Tennessee teachers, and we have some people that may not be construed as highly qualified. However, Rutherford County can boast that we're a hundred percent highly qualified. And I want to say, Paula, Ms. Barnes, I appreciate so much your hard work. And I know you want to pass that on to Dana Nichols, who's kind of her right-hand lady. But also, if you would, step up here and just kind of give a quick summary of what it means, what's required, and anything else pertinent.
Thank you. One of the requirements is that all of the certified employees that we employ in Rutherford County, they are highly qualified. And we make sure upon employment that they hold the correct credentials to make them highly qualified. That could be their praxis test scores. It could be their degree in a particular subject area, which gives them twenty-four credit hours in a core subject. It could be their house criteria, which means they've gone through an evaluation as a teacher in a particular area. So for us, for all of our teachers employed in Rutherford County, we make sure that they... So for us, for all of our teachers employed in Rutherford County, we make sure that they are highly qualified, and then we upload that information to the state of Tennessee. What happens sometimes is that the state has errors when they try to mix and match social security numbers and teacher numbers. And also, when we do our preliminary reports, and sometimes the course codes are entered correctly, or a number is, again, mixed, and it throws that teacher out as not being highly qualified for a particular course. When the state looks at it, they look at courses, not at people. And Rutherford County has seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven courses that we must be one hundred percent highly qualified in. So if a teacher, and let's use in high school an example, a teacher can teach one area out for one period. So if they're highly qualified in history and endorsed in history, they could teach a block of geography. Well, that might make them not highly qualified in that particular course if they didn't meet that criteria for geography. So that might throw us off that hundred percent just for that one little thing. So we've worked very hard this year to make sure that everybody is HQ in all courses that they teach. And I think that's a great thing to boast, is that out of those seventy-nine hundred courses, we are one hundred percent now. And then Dana has done an excellent job in working on this with the instruction department to make sure that we correct all the little errors that were in there.
Yeah, let me respond to that. I went to a, served on a board today. There's a new initiative, teacher quality initiative, so that when student teachers arrive into the actual teaching position, they've changed the way, first of all, their coursework. And the last year of student teaching, they'll probably be doing two separate residencies. The first one will have a lot of latitude in what they do, second one more of the student teaching approach. But anyway, I thought it was pretty interesting, one of the superintendents, Clint Satter from Hartsfield, made a comment. He said, we're just killed, Danny, we can't find enough certified teachers, we're having to issue waivers, alternate licenses, etc., which I think we can be proud knowing that we're not in that same boat. Part of it probably is traced back to that job fair we have every spring, which has been remarkable. Secondly, I think a lot of people want to teach in our county. And third, we hire early.
Yes, all of those things.
You know, we're out there, we're beating the bushes, trying to get them in here early on. So when you hear people say they can't find teachers, and they can't find qualified teachers, perhaps that's why we do okay academically.
Thank you.
Good job, Paul.
How many certified employees do we presently have?
Right at twenty-eight hundred.
Wow.
Any other questions?
Our success goes back directly to the top, Mr. Gill, and appreciate the job that you do. I think the board needs to be commended too, as a group. I think that we've all worked well together in helping make Rutherford County a leader in education, not only in the state, but in the nation. And I like to say that every time, and Mr. Odom has said it. When we say we're number one in this, or number seven, or number six, and somebody comes up and says, yeah, well, that's out of number forty-two that you are in the nation, or whatever. But no, these things that we're talking about, we compare in the nation in those areas, that we say we're number six, or seven, or this, or that. So I'm proud of that, and I know the board is too. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Ms. Michaels, thank you too, because you're the person.
Amen.
Any other discussion?
I am, of course. This, I know enough about this just to be dangerous, I guess. And that is, security of T-CAP and everything. I'm seeing on the signs now as I pass the schools about T-CAP dates and everything. And as I was driving down the road today in my pickup truck, I heard a newscast where some system was in trouble about security with the test. I don't know to what extent, but what, how do we secure all the tests that we have? And I don't expect an answer tonight or anything.
Well, let me just say this, we have the same concern. I mean, test security is serious business, and fraudulent application is serious business. You know, if a teacher makes the wrong move, their career is over, period, if it's done intentionally. I heard the same story you heard, and I couldn't help but think what I heard is probably could result in a termination. I'm not passing judgment there. But we had, in the last two weeks, we had, and I mandated that every principal come, not just the test coordinator. And that, I think everybody bought a team of three or four, we went over all kinds of information with respect to what is construed as a fraudulent application of test, which can't do, like you can't write stuff on chalkboard, can't go over and answer questions, can't do this, can't do that. Now, this year, and Don could tell you better than I, there are all kind of modifications that are made for kids, you know, where you can verbalize a test to them. But there are so many rules and so many potential opportunities to foul up. It's really frightening, isn't it, Don? But I'd like to think our people are well-prepared. You know, we pin a lot of the, we put a lot of that, we put that responsibility right on the shoulders of the principal, not just say, hey, don't give this your guidance counselor, it goes much higher than that. You purchased a lock, you might know that, but you purchased some lock cabinets for schools a year ago and all. Everything has to be behind a double lock, lock room, locked cabinet, and those answer sheets and stuff. You're spotlighting education next time. Ann and I have kind of, Carl, who's our testing coordinator, is going to bring you some more of this information. You ask additional questions, it's high stakes. You know, for example, you talked about, we talked about, if you've got two, or three, or four kids whose test is considered invalid because it was administered incorrectly, that could put a whole subgroup on target in a particular school. And of course, we know the consequences there. So again, it goes back to making sure that we disseminate information to each and every teacher regarding what they can do and what isn't acceptable. And you know, if you're watching out there now, I'm going to go back and repeat the teachers, be cautious, know what you can do. You know, they ultimately sign a form that basically swears that they're compliant with what's allowed. And don't just sign off without knowing what's allowed, because this is serious deal, high stakes, as you said, Don.
I want to make, this brings up a good opportunity to make a comment about test scores. Because we see it in the newspaper all the time, test scores, we see it on television all the time, test scores. What it really amounts to is student achievement. A much better term than how well a child did on a test is say, how well did a child achieve? And that is what it's all about, the achievement. That's how we find out how much achievement, how many, how much the child has achieved. So I think it's a better term to use, student achievement. So I thought that's a good opportunity to say that. I hear that quite a bit from someone else in my family. Go ahead.
Rick, there's a thought that I've carried around for a long time, that there are no throwaway children. We can't afford to let children not work to their full potential. We must find ways to advance them, that's not giving them anything, they have to earn it. But we can't just say, well, they failed, and out the door. That's not something that is acceptable any longer. So we have to continue to work and find ways to help children succeed.
As we talked about yesterday, education is a child's ticket to success. That's their ticket to success, especially children in poverty situations. It's their ticket out of poverty, it's so important. And parents need to know that, I'm sure they do, but they need to think about it more, and we need to think about it more. It's a ticket. You've heard me enough, I guess. Any other discussion? All minds at ease.